The first part of our agenda, I'd like to call on Ms. Baker. I'd like for her to go over our board policy, BO 35. I'd like, we were sent a copy of it in our packet. So if you would get that, and Ms. Baker will read that for us. I think we should start the meeting first with the board policy for employment of director of schools.
Okay. I handed out before the meeting, each of you should have had a packet of some notes regarding how to begin the selection for a director, and BO policy 35, and also the two relevant state statutes that deal with this issue. The first thing that I'd like to point out is that under TCA 49-2-203A 14B, that is the statute that requires every school board to have a policy relative to accepting and reviewing applications and interviewing candidates for the position of director of schools. So fortunately, you do already have such a policy on the books, that's BO 35. And what I'm going to do is go through that policy so you're aware of what it states currently. Under this policy, it is the board's function to appoint the director. And when a vacancy occurs in the director's position, the board must take a vote regarding whether the board wants to begin the search and interview candidates. So you would need to take that vote. Under this policy, it allows the board to employ a consultant to advise and assist the board in the search and selection process. The final selection, however, rests with the board after a thorough consideration of the qualified applicants. And you need to keep in mind that an interim director under our policy cannot become a candidate for the director position unless the board specifically votes for such inclusion of that person as a candidate. Additionally, the policy states, the state statute 49-2-203A 1D, which I've included that statute in the packet for you, states that a board member may not apply for in any other way be considered for the position of director. And the selection of the director under our policy requires a two-thirds vote, meaning five out of the seven board members. So that is the policy that you currently have in place. Now, there are some other legal issues that you need to be aware of before you begin the selection process. The first issue that I wanted to bring to your attention is the public records issues that arise when you are doing a selection process for a director of schools. The legislature has added to the Public Records Act, Section 10-7503F, that specifically states that all records, employment applications, credentials, and similar documents obtained by any person in conjunction with an employment search for a director of schools or any chief public administrative officer shall at all times during business hours be open for personal inspection by any citizen of Tennessee. And those in charge of such records shall not refuse such right of inspection to any citizen unless otherwise provided by state law. So you need to keep in mind that even if you did hire a consultant, the records in their hands would also be considered a public record under this statute. So the applications, their credentials, their reference checks, all of that information that you gather as part of the search process is made a public record under this statute. There's also been a court case that I referenced there that specifically addressed if the records were in the hands of a committee that had been established by the board to conduct the search, those records are considered a public record. Now, the next legal issue that you need to keep in mind before you begin the selection process is open meetings issues. Under the open meetings law, if the board chose to establish a committee to do the selection process, then that committee would be subject to the open meetings law because it was established by the board. And that committee would be responsible for having their meetings advertised, their meetings would have to be open to the public, they would have to keep minutes, they would have to take all of their votes in the public and in public in open meetings. And just as a side note, if you chose to establish such a committee, one housekeeping mechanism would be that you would need to determine who was going to act as a secretary for that committee, who would maintain those minutes and make sure the proper advertisements got put in the papers relative to their meetings. And then two other statutes that I wanted to make sure you were familiar with before you started this process were under first section 49-2-301D, and you've got a copy of that. It is the only state statute that really sets out a required criteria for a director. And that statute requires that any director appointed by a local Board of Education is required to have a bachelor's degree. Now, the next statute I wanted to make sure you were familiar with is the section 49-2-203A 14A, and that's also in your packet. It says that the board is the sole authority in appointing a director. Once you appoint a director, you would enter into a written contract that can initially be for up to four years. That contract will be renewable at your discretion. Now, this is the part that I thought was important for you to be aware of, is that under that statute, the board cannot terminate or enter into a contract with any director of schools during a period extending 45 days prior to the general school board election until 30 days following the general school board election. So the next school board election is, I believe, scheduled for April the 13th of 2010. So that blackout time, and when you could enter into a contract with a new director, would be between February 27th of 2010 and May 13th of 2010. So I wanted to bring that time period to your attention because if it becomes relevant during the search process. And also, the statute indicates that any vacancy which occurs during that specific time period may be filled on a temporary basis but not for longer than 60 days following the general school board election. And so that deadline would be June 13th. Do any of you have any questions regarding that information?
No, thank you.
Seeing or hearing no questions, and Kelly has given out your handout, so later on, if you want to, you're welcome to revisit this. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. White. He's going to come up and say a few things to us about the process we're getting ready to get into.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to express my appreciation for being here. I've been with TSBA for about 15 years and have the opportunity to work with your board during retreats and those things. I want to kind of give you my background to let you know where I'm coming from. I've been a school board member, I haven't been for 24 years, served as chairman for 12. As school board chairman years ago, before, I guess, many people did superintendent searches or officially did it, I actually conducted. Our board, we decided to do our own search and I conducted, so I've got experience in that. As a consultant with the Tennessee School Board Association, I have served as their representative in seven superintendent searches. I've also been a candidate and a finalist in about five school board searches. So I'm coming to you from about any direction you can think of. And I think I can answer any questions. And basically, what I want to do today is just talk about the whole thing. First thing I do want to say, I'm not here to solicit your business. TSBA will represent you and continue to represent you legislatively, legally, policies, and everything else. If you should choose to use those as consultant, that's fine. If you don't, that's fine. I'm just here to talk about it personally and give you some thoughts and some things to think about. For example, do you even need to do a search? That's the first decision you need to make. And by that, I mean, if you've got some, someone, or a few people within this school system that this board feels should, are very qualified and could be a good superintendent, I wouldn't hire a consultant. You don't, if you've got what you think you need for this position in the system, you can do that. Second thing, this happens a lot. The system says, well, we've got a couple of people we think might be a good candidate. On the other hand, we maybe, we need to hear some other people. Then conduct, open up the search and include local people or anybody that wants to apply. That's an alternative. And the one thing, I'll probably say this again, a board has supreme authority, basically. Number one, you only have one employee. You can't be involved in employment issues with exception to one employee, and that's superintendent. And throughout these times when we have searches and conduct them, the board keeps saying, well, what do we do? What do we do? I say, look, if you interview a person tonight and say, that's the person we want, the board can say, okay, let's vote. That's the person we want. You could even today, I would strongly advise against this, but this board could actually make a motion second and elect somebody superintendent right now. You have that authority as long as you stay within compliance with the state law and all. Now, some other things I want to talk about. Do you want to do your own search? Again, speaking from personal experience, we did. I was fortunate enough to have a job at that time that gave me six weeks vacation. I took four weeks vacation to conduct superintendent search. And this was before the tremendous amount of legal information pertaining to personal records, security of information, et cetera. A board can do it, but please keep in mind, you best have someone that will be pretty well full-time dedicated to do that search if you do it. And what advantage do you have if you do your own search? Truth of it is, on most searches that I've conducted with TSBA, the cost of a consultant and not even necessarily us, the cost of consultant usually runs about less than one tenth of one percent of the annual budget. And when you look at corporations and what they spend to look for their top executive and all, believe me, it's a whole lot more than that. So the cost is not a factor. Now, the other thing about doing your own, it's extremely time consuming. Now, let's look at the other thing. If we get a consultant, what's advantages of that, disadvantages? I will say this right now, we're doing a couple of searches, I just finished up one. There's not a lot of potential candidates, as there have been in the past. There are candidates out there, but you really need to know what bushes to look behind, basically, and what you want. So that's one plus for the consultant, they've done this before and been there and know what to do. Some things you need to do, and this is really why I'm glad I'm here, is to point some of these things out. There are some things that you're going to have to do. Number one, it's not a simple factor to say, we're just going out and hire a superintendent. You've got to know what you're looking for. For example, is there something in your five-year plan that a new person would, you would like to question them about on the five-year plan? Do you have some shortcomings that you need to address? What about your five-year goals? Have you all, do you feel solid that they're there, what you want, what you need? Do you want to limit the, the search we did, I hate to even admit this, but this has been a good while ago, one of the criteria we set on our searches, they couldn't have a doctorate. Because we were a little bit of town, and we felt like it might be a problem, have somebody that's smart come in the system, ain't that dumb? Since I've got my doctorate, I've decided that was really stupid. But those are the things you have to think about, you know? The other thing, the law says you can grant somebody a four-year contract. You know, standard is, recommendation is, probably three. You'll hear some people say, oh, no, no, you don't want to tie your hands for three years. The truth of it is, when somebody comes on board, their first year, if they're not within the system, their first year is pretty much a wash. So that only gives them two years to have things in place and see. Four years, I don't, you know, I don't see that as a necessity, you know? But that's what the standard is. We have people do everything else, we have people do four years, we have people, and this is why I like to bring this up, because when you advertise, whether it be through your own search or consultant, if you advertise, we're looking for somebody to be a superintendent with a two-year contract, you just shut out about half of them. They're not even going to consider it if they're, if they're away from here. A local person might, because they don't have the expenses. Then you've got all those other things. Are you going to pay for the expense to move? What's your salary range? We strongly recommend that you set a salary range, you'd need to look at the other systems, comparable salaries, and set a range. During negotiation and interviews and contract negotiation, you can finalize and come up with a definite figure on that. Other thing, a timeline. One of the most important things that you need to decide is start at the end. What date do we want somebody on board? And then set your timeline up for that. It's my understanding, your current superintendent's, I think, has a date of October 1st? October 1st? That's possible. That can be done. You may not want to do that. You may want to make it January 1st. You may want to make it longer than that. I would say this, if you've got, well, I think you do have a board election coming up, it would certainly be more knowledge on this board if you could do this somehow prior to the election day. With the people, all the people on this board, know boards, they know a lot of the law and other things, that's one thing to think about. We generally recommend six months. Now, when we recommend six months, what we're really talking about is you come in, the consultants come in and conduct community meetings. These are fairly extensive, take a certain amount of time. Generally, community input of that nature is usually asked for when it's a bad situation. I hate to say that, but it may be that the, the board is not satisfied as what's happened, that superintendent's been terminated, or the superintendent doesn't like something, or so forth and so on. And so, a superintendent search is opportune time to get the involvement of the community. But it's also, can be done in other ways other than community meetings. A board can allow community input in other ways. I've known your system for a pretty good length of time. I would say that, my personal opinion, is when you're looking at doing a search and all, I don't know that you, how extensive you want to do. I don't know if you're really looking at, at a basket turnover, cleaning of house, or any of this type thing. And that's usually what you're talking about when you're talking about lots of community and meetings, lots of community involvement. But at the same time, it certainly belongs to the community, and you do need the input of the community. Let me stop real quick, I see some people looking at me like you've got a question. Anybody have a question where we are at this point?
Hi, Dr. White. You're talking, when you're talking about this search, you're talking about a national search, correct?
That's, that's up to the board.
But there are such things as a regional search. I was going to ask, have you found in Tennessee, since no child left behind, do you kind of more in-state applicants occur because of the changes in curriculum at the state level and no child left behind laws? I was just thinking, are you doing more regional searches now as opposed to national searches?
We asked, we really asked the board to establish a criteria, and one of the questions we ask is minimum qualifications. Most people like a master's degree with educational or administrative experience. And generally, they'll say regional. And by regional, they'll say maybe the southeastern United States, or, we've never had anybody say just Tennessee, because you know how those people over in east Tennessee are, so that's kind of a different region anyway. Just joking. But no, we, generally, we want somebody, they'll say, we want somebody that's kind of like us. But now, on the other hand, I've seen, we have a lot of candidates that will come in that have retired. A lot of states have 20-year retirement. And we've got a lot of candidates, in fact, I don't think we've done a search that there hasn't been an out-of-state candidate on a boring state. And most of those are pretty well aware of what's going on in Tennessee. Of course, all of them know no child left behind and that type of thing. In fact, if we, in the last six months, if we had not had out-of-state candidates, we probably wouldn't have had a good selection of candidates. Is that answered, or is that too much? I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Yes, sir. You said you did believe it was possible to do it by the October 1st date. Do you think it's possible to do it by the October 1st date and still have community input?
I don't think you, I don't think you would have time, you can get, I think that's where it would be one of the areas you'd have to streamline. The board would have to sit down with consultant whoever it might be to determine some way to do that. You don't have, you won't have any problem getting input. The problem, and the reason we asked for this, and this is, I guess I'm not really giving a total explanation of that, what we like to do, and most other consultants do this, we want to establish some type of criteria of what you're looking for in superintendent. Good communicator, good policy person, good financial person. And so we have these community meetings to ask for people input on that. I've actually had one system that asks for that information, but the way they did it because of the time thing, was put it on the web and also put copies of it, even in the newspaper or libraries or whatever, of a form to fill out so people didn't put it that way. That might be something you would do. To conduct community meetings, it'd be pretty hard to get a good thorough saturation, but you could still have maybe one meet or something. You know, it's, it's just a matter of some give and take when you're, when you're timed. Basically, we look at optimum six months. We've done searches with less than a month, but you have to, you have to do some sacrificing if you do that.
Thank you.
Stop.
When the TSBA does a search, do you just advertise the opening and accept positions? Or do you actually call prospective, or call people that are in?
We shake every tree.
Have a job.
We shake every tree we can shake to get candidates.
So you, you call, you call other superintendents?
We email, letter mail, we communicate to every school system in the state of Tennessee, and ask each superintendent to personally call them as, as we're approaching this, to see if they have candidates. We also send it to everyone, and this is where we pick up some of the superintendents from, from out-of-state, we send it to all other state school board associations, and they advertise it in their states for us. So we saturate pretty well what we do. We'll also send it to the universities in the state of Tennessee, if they know of anybody that has graduated through their school, that would be.
Would you call all superintendents in the surrounding area? I don't want, I hate to have a job, I want somebody that, that has a job.
Well, yeah, we'll be, it may not be a telephone, but yes, we will, we will be sure that they are all very much aware of it, yes, sir. And that's, and I'm not here, I'm trying to avoid pitching us, but that's one, that's, that is one advantage that TSBA has, is that we're in constant contact with those folks around. Anything else?
Mr. Campbell has a question.
When you conduct a search, and let's say you narrow it down to five candidates, then if this board has somebody that is not on your selection group, that is consensus that they would like to interview, is that still a possibility? Or are most searches, whatever the search body does?
The way we do it, and I assume most of the other people, we would ask the board how many people you would like to interview. The search I just finished with, here's, here's how this went, and this will answer your question. They said, we would like for TSBA to give us four candidates. We have two principals in this school system that we also want to interview. That's the way we did it. We gave them four candidates, they interviewed them, they took the two, they wanted to interview, they interviewed that. The downside of that is, what, what, we have a committee, a committee that selects these candidates. The board says, send us five, we give you five based on the criteria. If you do a community meetings, that's where your criteria comes from. If you don't have time to get a thorough saturation of developing criteria that way, then the board would provide the criteria, not do the, that'd be an expense that could be eliminated as well, but still get community input other ways and said. Then they take the criteria along with the references and telephone calls and see which of those candidates come out the closest match. If the board says our highest criteria is someone that's outstanding in financial, then most likely, without any question, those five will be selected on that basis. So that's where, that's a little of the downside. But still, if the board so chooses to add two to it, that's fine.
Ms. Duncan has a question.
My question relates to an interim position. It'd be wonderful if we could have someone in place by October 1st, but if that doesn't happen, like any school system in today's age of accountability, we don't have a second to waste. So could you give us just a little insight on what our steps should be to make sure that as of October 1st, we would have an interim in place? I mean, the steps that we should go through to make that happen?
Well, that's exactly what the law says. Comes up, October 1st, you have to have an interim superintendent. And we've had boards that have, I don't even want to say who they are, but we've had boards that would make the board secretary the interim superintendent. The interim superintendent, the main purpose of the interim superintendent, number one, and again, this is my personal feeling, but I think a lot of people share this, what you want the interim superintendent to do is to take care of the legal requirements of office superintendent, signing papers, et cetera, hiring people, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You do not want them coming in, making academic changes, anything of that nature. They're really there just to take care of the legal work. You know, I, the boards do this every way you can think of. My personal thought of it is, is there needs to be possibly an invitation from the board of anybody that might be interested in being in interim, and for them to submit a resume or something like that, and then the board would have to sit down and, and make a decision. The danger of that is, nobody submits. Then what do you do, say? So, most of the time, when we have interim, what takes place is a board, it, and it's, the last one I talked, two days ago, I was talking to one person, supervisor middle school, they chose her to be the superintendent and continue to be supervisor of middle school. They also moved the supervisor instruction to being a principal, so now the interim is those three positions. And that's what the board needs to guard against. Money's tight, but you don't want to pull a key person out of a position and not have an, somebody in that position. So, you know, so I would, I would say, as large as this system is, it'd probably be a good idea maybe to ask for resumes and do it. But again, the law says you've got to have that. The length of it, the length of it, we've had interims 18 months, which is not good. And then the other decision, I think you pointed this out, it's not a good practice to have an interim and then appoint them superintendent. You can do that, but I would certainly adhere to what, well, you can't, your policy says you can't, but I would adhere to that because that looks like a lot of cronyism and favoritism and, you know, come on, we'll let you be interim, then all of a sudden you're the superintendent, and that's just blocking everybody out. Anything else?
I'd like to ask the board members, are there any more questions for Dr. White? Because there's some issues on here that we need to get to today. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving us that information. Thank you for your time.
Tammy asked, ran these off. Uh, this is what I would normally do if I was here presenting my pitch for superintendent search, and I'm gonna leave this with you.
Thank you.
Uh, not necessarily to hire us, but this gives you a lot of valuable information involved with superintendent search. And the truth of it is, uh, you gotta get moving. And if this will help, I'll give it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir.
Anytime you need, give me a call.
Thank you. Mrs. Phillips has a question for Doc, uh, for Ms. McGannon.
Well, while we have Ms. McGannon here, and the mayor, and Mr. Washington, I was interested in how you gathered criteria for your recent, um, search for city manager. You, um, did the, the council people develop their particular criteria, each one? How did that work?
Ms. Phillips, as you know, the council decided, uh, that it would not pursue the search. What the council had done is work on the criteria for the consulting firm. Um, staff had worked on getting information about consulting firms and had winnowed that down to, um, a, a small number. The criteria for the city manager's position had not been developed by the council at the time they made the decision not to continue with the national search. So, the criteria that were developed were for search firms, not for the candidate.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
Thank you, Ms. McGannon. If I heard Ms. Baker correct, we need a motion and a vote to proceed with the selection process for the director of schools. Is there a motion?
Second.
For the benefit, if you will state your motion, Ms. Ridley needs to have that in the minute versus, if you just stated, Dr. Buttram, if you just stated for us, and then she can give us a second.
I make a motion that we pursue a search for a director of schools.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Andrews, second. Ms. Ridley, will you call the roll?
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Zederman?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you so much. Now, we're ready to go to work. Do you want to, as a board, focus today on the issue of consultant versus non-consultant? I think that's where we are at this point, and the direction that we need to go. But before we get started, I wanted to thank Ms. Mathis and the staff for getting together the information that they have given us on what some of the other boards have done. So, at the time when we began our discussion on the focus of consultant versus non, if any of the board members have anything they want to add, or maybe they've done some research on a consulting firm and want to talk, I want you to realize that we're stewards of the money. And we want to keep that in perspective when we start talking about, "I'd love to go get one that's a hundred thousand dollars," but we, we're not in gear for that. So, we want to think about what we're up against and where we want to go. So, now, we're going to open this floor for discussion on the focus of consultant versus non-consultant.
May I say something before we start that? Um, I haven't had a chance to say that, um, I want to thank Ms. Mathis for many long years with our system. She has been an excellent director. She, her integrity is beyond reproach, and I, I, um, only hope that we can find someone that has the financial savvy, the, uh, people skills, the, uh, the, the knowledge, the knowledge of curriculum, um, someone who has a passion for the children, and, and somebody who always puts the children first. And I think she always knew that the way to keep those children first was to support our teachers and our principals. And I just cannot thank her enough for the long, hard work she's put in, and it's been a joy to work with you, Ms. Mathis. And, uh, we're, we're losing a real treasure, I think. Um, we, it's, it's, uh, a little daunting to think that we might find someone of your caliber out there, and I, I hope we do, but it's gonna be a real challenge. And I really wanted to thank you, and hadn't had the opportunity to do that where, where other people would know how much I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you so much.
Are we ready then to determine whether or not we want to do a search with a search firm, like TSBA or some other organization?
That is what I-
I think we, Dr. Buttram, your motion was to conduct a search, is that correct?
Was to conduct a search, but I don't think it included the-
It didn't.
What we have heard.
Right.
Should we, should we talk about the timeline first, Ms. Wade? Uh, should we establish the timeline for this process? Because if it's going to end up being six months, then we probably, we may need a search for me, but if we, if it's not going to be, then we may not. Does that may have something to do with whether we can hire a, uh, search consultant?
I don't know how many has even given any thought to a timeline. Uh, I was reading over this paperwork that we were given, and it was quite a bit. But one of the first things that was on here was the adoption of a timeline and procedures. That's gonna be tough for this board to do all in one meeting. And in order to get a set timeline, you're gonna need, we're going to need another meeting. And when I say another meeting, I mean a, within a few days, if no more than maybe next Monday or Tuesday, when everybody, if you're not prepared today, uh, I don't have a problem with talking about the timeline at all. And I want to hear your discussion about it, but if, that's why I asked the favors, favor of all of you, and I hope that everyone has a calendar, so we can look at some days that, there's a lot of meeting that's gonna be involved for this board and this process. So, if you want to start with, um, the timeline, that would be fine.
I, I think your idea of starting with the, whether doing a consultant for our firm, or doing it ourselves, let's, let, I'd, I'd like to address that, if I may.
Well, that was my question on the floor, and then we can address the other one. You have something you want to say about that?
About, about what you were, um, yeah. I, I think that, um, uh, an advantage of, of getting a, a firm or the TSBA to do this for us, um, is that, uh, yeah, one of the advantages is, we don't have to deal with the, the awkward, um, you know, having the, uh, meetings under the sunshine, where you have to have repeated, and, and it's gonna take several meetings and, and a lot of work by either us or a firm to get the information all together and make decisions. And I, I just think that it would be more efficiently done if it were done by either the TSBA's, um, uh, search services or a consultant. That would be, um, my recommendation.
Is there any more discussion, if anyone else would like to talk about the consultant versus non-consultant?
Oh, I would. I, I feel like we owe it to the children of Murfreesboro to do the very best job we can do, and to get the best person that we can in this office. Uh, we've got a sixty-five million dollar budget, annual budget, and whatever expense that we have to incur to find a highly qualified leader, uh, I, I think we owe it to the children. I, I was not, and I, I, over the years, I have gotten calls frequently from search firms, and they call and say, "Do you know somebody that's interested in a job?" Which means, "Are you interested?" And I don't think just any, uh, organization, or I would want an organization, a search firm, that, that I was highly confident in their, uh, ability and their work and that type of thing. And if that, that costs more, and we have to spend more, I'm, I'm for whatever it takes to do the best we can. Uh, I, I just don't want us just running ads in the, uh, educational publications and anybody who's out of a job sending in an application. I want, I want somebody that's got a job, and I want somebody that has the ability to deal with the challenges that our system faces, and, uh, we may have to look high and low for that person, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, accept number two or number three. I want number one.
Question?
Mr. Campbell?
There are other firms other than TSBA that does this. I don't have anything against TSBA doing it, okay? But at the same time, we've only heard from them. Now, do we need to hear from other firms, or do we need to contact, uh, other systems that have done the searches and have used maybe other firms in TSBA, or? I gue, I guess I go back and I, I think of, uh, you know, Rutherford County Schools in the last thirty years have had several searches done. Uh, so, do we need to contact, like I said, somebody, somebody that has other criteria for firms, or are we go, are we satisfied with TSBA? And if we're satisfied with TSBA, we need to determine which one of the plans we want to go with.
Well, let me clarify something. The reason Dr. White was here was not to pitch for them, so I don't want anybody to think that that was the upper hand for them. The reason I ask if anybody had maybe talked to some more board members, or not this board, but other systems like Cannon County or Williamson County, boards that are under the same thing. I took the time to call one, uh, other agency, and before they could even talk to me about it, um, they asked me three questions. "How many students do you have? Where are you located? And you need to get a proposal sent to me so I can send you some information." And I was a little founded with that, so I thought, "Okay," and they said, "Oh, email the webmaster." I thought, "Well," I didn't, it caught me off guard, but I did ask the question. I was hoping maybe some more board members had some input. That's what I'm after. Mr. Campbell had a good question. We say we want to go ahead and get started. I don't know how long it would take to get other, uh, consulting, uh, units, but, and I'd rather not call the name of the one, but at, you know, I'd be more than happy to tell you after the meeting which one I called.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Wouldn't first answer to any more? Has anybody, Ms. Duncan?
Um, I've spoken to some board members in other districts who've just been through searches recently, and we all know that Metro Nashville's been through a search. They were very pleased with, um, or at least individuals I spoke with, with the company they had. I know there are, uh, districts who use TSBA, and they're very pleased, and I have over my years of experience, since I'm in school districts all over the state, some that have not been as pleased, but, you know, that's just part of the mix. I definitely believe that we need to, um, you know, engage the services of someone to help us with this. I'm in total agreement with Mr. Hopper that we, our teachers and our students deserve the very best. Um, I know sometime it's just rhetoric, but I don't like the idea of shaking every tree and looking behind every bush, uh, because our school system has too much to offer a new director, and at the same time, a new director needs to be able to have a lot to offer us so we can continue to move forward. So, I would be very much in favor of our, um, pursuing, hiring someone to help with this process.
I've got one more comment that's not very nice. Uh, over the years, I've attended a whole lot of, of school board meetings, and there were a lot of school superintendents from all over the state there. And unfortunately, I wasn't impressed with a whole lot of them, so I, I don't want to limit our scope to, to Tennessee, so. And they, one thing I think that, uh, I was thinking about the problem, is that, I, I would like to, uh, contact some, uh, large companies in our area who have HR people who are experienced in hiring search firms, and talk with them about some of the criteria they use. We might piggyback off some of the information from the city, but I think that, that, one of our big jobs, uh, initially is select, if we do a search firm, is selecting the right one. And I, I think we probably need some help with, with, uh, helping figure out what we need to be thinking about as we choose that firm. And, uh, one other thing, let me tell you, from my experience in banking with ad hunters, they aren't cheap, and we're, so you might as well get ready to open a pocketbook if we do go this route.
Is TSBA cheaper than most of the other consultants?
Yes.
Yes.
And I, I talked to some other people at, uh, our last session that we had for TSBA from Cannon County that they were using TSBA, so they seem to be happy with them, and, uh, I would think that what Dr. White said about having those connections, going through the searches, knowing who's out there, having the network to all the, uh, directors of schools here in other states, and the universities, uh, you know, we, we've paid the members of TSBA for years now, I think we should trust their services, uh, that they would be able to offer us in the search.
I think Mr. Hopper does have an excellent idea, though, because he's been in, he's in business and had a lot of experience with that sort of thing in the corporate world for many years, so I think that is good advice. Um, Ms. Wade and Ms. Baker, do we require a motion on whether or not we hire a consultant, consulting firm of some kind?
You're gonna need a motion when, to, um, start requesting proposals from consulting firms, and then when you get those proposals, you'll have to evaluate them and then just determine which one you want to select.
But we don't have to have a motion saying that we choose to, um, engage or hire a consulting firm? No?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Well, I recommend you-
You could if you wanted to.
Ms. Wade?
Dr. Andrews?
Um, yeah, one of the things that we need, that we do need to think about, as Dr. Buttram mentioned, is our timeline. And, uh, if we want to hire someone before the blackout period, or, uh, as soon as possible after October 1st, then that would make us kind of lean toward TSBA. Um, I don't know how long it would take us, I don't know if the city, maybe, if you all have some experience, how long you thought it would take you from getting up a proposal to getting, uh, uh, responses back to hiring somebody. I don't know how much that adds to the timeline. I think that's something I'd be interested in knowing.
And the board's gonna need to decide who they want to look for the, um, consultant. Who do they want to gather the information regarding the various consultant firms?
Who would be the typical person, Ms. Baker, that would be appointed to do that?
Typically, you could have, uh, the director, the current director, do that for you, or, um, the human resources person could be doing that. It's, it's up to the board who they want to choose to, or I could do that for you. Um, so it's up to the board who they want to choose to look for a consultant.
Chris Duncan?
I would like to make a recommendation that we ask Mrs. Baker to do that, partly because I know Ms. Mathis could do that, but she has a lot on her plate right now as she ties up her days with us and looks forward to her new position, and, um, I just would hate to see other people within our district be tied up having to do that. I know you're very busy, too, but I would like to, for us to consider asking Mrs. Baker to begin that search for us, starting?
Yesterday?
Yesterday, but I think she's also on her way to some training also. So, I just put that in matter of motion, or?
Yes, and I would also need some criteria as to what you're looking for in the search firm.
Yes, everything. I realize that we need to give her more information, not just leave you, Duncan.
Okay. Are you making that as a motion? Mrs. Duncan?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we ask Mrs. Baker to be the individual that we charge with getting us more information about consulting firms.
Is there a second?
Second.
There has been a motion and second.
Can we discuss it? I, I just wanted to, uh, see if there was anybody else who might be interested in doing that. I don't know, Mr. Hopper might be spending too much time on the golf course to do it. He's got some idea. I don't know, I just-
I think that, I'm not sure whether the chicken or the egg comes first in this whole process, if we're getting the carton for the horse, that we start picking it, or getting information about search firms, or? Are you sure we got the, we got the process in order?
Well, that does not-
I haven't thought that that much.
That doesn't stop the board from setting down and setting criteria. That just starts the search for her instead of waiting on us. She's gonna need some things from us. I know you already have in mind some things you already want, that we could tell Mrs. Baker, "Here's what we're looking for, and that's why we're here today. We're looking for this." Maybe four tight things that we're looking for right off the bat, when you look for a search firm, one of them is- When you look for a search firm, one of them is, now, Mr. Hopper said there is no, shouldn't be a barrier. Cost is very important to me, but it may not be to anybody else. But that's one thing for me. I can't see paying somebody eighty thousand dollars, because I don't, that's hypothetical. I just don't see it. I just don't for some reason, I just don't. But it may take that, but that's just my opinion. But one of them may be cost. If you see something else you want, proximity, maybe we don't want anybody in Texas doing a search when we need them a pretty close accessibility to us. So, those are the things I thought she was asking for as far as getting started. Our job wants we give her that, and I don't see it taking just about less than five minutes. And then, then we need to decide a date to when, and it needs to be tight within the next, I'll say forty-eight to seventy-two hours for us to meet again as a meeting, for us to sit down and talk about the criteria, because she's going to bring that information back quickly.
And Ms. Wade, the board could recess to another date certain if you announce that date and time today at this meeting.
We'll try and do that.
So, you can put this meeting in recess until that next announced date and time.
Mr. Campbell and Ms. Phillips?
Okay, the way I understand the motion is that we're asking Ms. Baker to begin the process of trying to find a search firm for us.
To find search firms?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
To come back to give us, for us to choose from.
Okay, then she'll come back to us and make recommendations, and we then will select whichever firm we would like to use. Do we need to have the criteria for this director before you start looking for people, firms who might be interested?
No, I don't believe so, because that's going to be part of the function of the search firm, is to help you develop that criteria. And there's nothing to prevent you from starting to work on development of that criteria before a search firm is in place.
So, the only thing we're going to be voting on is whether or not we want Ms. Baker to start looking and exploring the avenues of different firms that could represent us after she brings back those recommendations and we decide on a firm to do so. Am I correct?
Thank you.
Ms. Wade?
Ms. Phillips was next.
No, no, I got the answer.
Okay. Dr. Andrews?
Do we need to discuss first, are we sure we want to go ahead and spend the time looking for a consulting firm versus discussing, should we just go ahead with TSBA now? I mean, is that, that seems to me that could be a decision that we'd want to make right now. You know, time's involved, money's involved. Do we, do we want to talk about that? Or have we already decided that we do want to search for a consulting firm?
Now, the vote has not been taken.
I think that's what we're voting on, whether or not we do or we don't.
That was the motion, and then we were having discussion. Would the person that made the motion like to rescind that motion for more discussion? Would you like to rescind your motion? Should I take it back?
Well, we can still have discussion.
All right.
I mean, because it doesn't mean that TSBA's name would not be on that list that's brought to us.
Right. I guess I just see that, do we want to skip, skip those steps or not? I'm not saying I want to, I'm just saying that that's an option that we have. Are we going to be certain that we're going to, that we're going to find a consulting firm that, that will do an appreciably better job than the TSBA would and make up, make up the time for the, you know, make up for the time that we lose looking for a search firm? Because that's going to take a little while. That will add on some time. So, just bringing that up to think about.
Ms. Baker, do you have any sense of what the turnaround time would be on getting back some sort of proposals or some sort of information on different consulting firms?
I really don't. When you, about two weeks? Two weeks?
I assume those would be firms with educational recruiting experience.
Yes.
So, that still wouldn't be addressing what you shared earlier, Mr. Hopper?
I'm sorry?
Earlier, you made some references to looking at some people in the corporate world that maybe could help us with some criteria.
I would prefer to have the benefit of some of their experiences with that, but under the time constraints we have, we may not have time. But in the meantime, I've put in a call for one person, but I don't know, maybe I'll get some information by the time we meet again, I'll share that with you if I learn anything of any benefit.
I don't see why one would preclude the other though. You know, having consulting firms, I don't know why that would preclude taking advantage of the things Mr. Hopper referenced, so.
Any more discussion?
Well, I would think that if Mr. Hopper has got some idea and some people that he can contact, that he certainly could get the information that he gets and then give it to Ms. Baker. And then, Ms. Baker could bring it all back and she looks into it all. That's who we're asking to do the criteria for a firm and bring back to us three or four recommendations perhaps. I'd say not more than four. If that's, that's not in the motion, but I would think that that would be plenty. And in the meantime, we need to set the criteria, I guess, the qualifications, certifications, on what we want the director to have.
We're not there yet. She's already kind of given us a little blurb of, once you get the consulting firm, that's what you're really sitting down with them to help you do. You've got, we've got our own ideas, but that's why we have her and that consulting firm help us list them and tell them really what we want. We don't want to jump out there too far. We haven't got a consulting firm and we've already kind of set what we're looking for. We're going to do that, but we still need to come back with what Ms. Baker wants, and I hope I've got this right. She wants the criteria from this board on what are you looking for in this consulting firm? What do you want her to look for?
No, one thing I want, I would want to have excellent references and not just something that they give us a piece of paper, but I would, I'd like for you or somebody to call someone in that system that wouldn't necessarily have been in cahoots with the consulting firm. But I'd like to have a couple of opinions about how good that consulting firm was.
And board members have anything else they'd like to add to that for Ms. Baker?
Cost.
We've had references and cost. Is there anything else?
Yeah, networking ability within the educational realm.
Do we want to do a regional search? Would this, would that make a difference or whether or not the firm?
Yes, if you could tell me whether you want a national search versus a regional search, that would be helpful.
Board, do you have any thing you want her, she's asking us, she wants to know if we want to do regional or national?
I'd recommend large regional, not the small region, but a larger region.
Southeastern?
Yeah.
Ms. Baker, do you think they utilize the internet technology like that now more than they used to? I would think that a national search is probably not going to be much different than a regional search anymore, the way they advertise. It would be pretty global.
Also, how, time in business, how long the company's been in business, do you have any criteria for that, what you're looking at?
I would say at least since the No Child Left Behind law has been enacted. They hired people to deal with that law.
You know, we've yet to vote if we actually want Mrs. Baker to do this for us.
Right.
Just circuiting right along. Is there any more discussion before we ask for the vote? Is there anything anyone else would like to say or ask? All right. Ms. Ridley, you've got the motion. Call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Yes.
Ms. Duggan?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram? Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wade? Yes.
Yes. We'll take care of that. Ms. Baker, do you have any other questions for us or anything else you?
Did you prefer a company that was located within Tennessee? Or does it matter to you, just as long as the proximity is reasonable?
Board members, she's asking us, do you want them, now, you wouldn't want them way out in Texas or something trying to work this area. Do you have a preference on how far out of what you'd like to see?
I don't know if y'all, there's one search firm in here that, as a matter of fact, they're the highest priced one actually, and I got on the website and looked at their information. And if y'all haven't done that, I would suggest you do that. They're, it's an Atlanta firm, but they have offices all over the country. They have a lot of former superintendents who are on their staff. They've got all kind of contacts and those type things. So, I personally, and again, I probably should have brought this up sooner, but I would prefer a, some, an organization that has a full-time staff, a professional recruiters that know what they're doing, that will contact candidates, and we will get what we pay for. And we can, we can go cheapo and hire Mr. Campbell and me to do the search, and we'll work for about two hundred dollars. But.
A month.
I'm retired, I don't do the wrong stuff.
He'll do it for free.
But I just tell you this, the board needs to get ready to open up your pocketbook, because we're talking about if somebody from out of state comes here, you probably going to have to buy their house where they are. We're, and we're talking about moving expenses, benefits, and you're going to certainly have to pay a salary that's competitive to get people to move here. So, y'all need to get real with what you're talking about. This is not a five thousand dollar deal. Anyway, if you're, but if you're going to get the best, you gotta, you gotta pay, and you're going to get what you pay for.
Are you talking about the person that is hired or the firm?
The person that you hired, you're going to have to pay.
Right, right.
Let's see what the firm's like for.
A month.
It may come back to the board. Ms. Baker said it would possibly take two weeks to get all this information.
Yes, and I will send you an email with my inquiry before I send it out, so that you individually can send me input to me as to how you would like that tweaked.
If we get out there and see that we cannot afford any of these folks that you brought back, do we have, would we have to come back, maybe have a call meeting and vote again to find somebody in a close proximity that we can use or possibly?
For the TSBA?
Yes, then you'd need to come back and decide how you were going to approach it at that point.
I think Phil Fulmer's available if we don't find anybody from the search firm that we can.
Is he in southeast?
I think we'll find somebody. Is there any more discussion at this time about the, since we've narrowed it down to Mrs. Baker's going to bring that back? What we need now is a date set for us to sit down and have a meeting about the criteria. So, when she does bring that information back, you'll be ready to roll.
Why don't we talk about the criteria right now? We're here, you know?
Now, I will say this, if we start and we don't get finished, we will have to recess to another date, and we'll set that date to date. Dr. Buttram?
Can I ask if we could discuss something else before the criteria, which would be the decision to hire an interim director? That way, we could at least go ahead and ask the community to submit resumes, and then by the time we meet again, we could talk about that in detail a little more. But I do think we need to decide as a board, are we going to expect this firm to have someone in place by October 1st? Or are we looking beyond that and having an interim in for a period of time between October 2nd and, say, January 1st or something like that? I do think, being in the school system, working in the school systems, that for us to look at trying to hire someone who's going to be effective in the month of August and September, interviewing, trying to get them to be excited about coming here and leaving their job, we're going to have to remember they're opening schools at that time. So, many of them who are superintendents will be just starting their schools. So, to think they're going to walk away from that, come down, interview, unless something's going on that they're not happy with, is kind of a fallacy. So, we, we really need to consider the interim position and then at least be looking in that direction, because that's a totally different issue than the search.
Well, let me say this, I don't know a fund this search for will get, but I do feel that there are folks sitting out there biting at the bits to walk into a situation that there's not a storm already going on. You'd probably be surprised, they're probably listening to the meeting today thinking, tough. Sure would love to be there tomorrow. At least, that's how I feel about what's in place with our principals and teachers already on board.
Yeah.
Some of the systems starting tomorrow. I know their folks just can't wait to come to Mercury's Borough. And that's the optimism that I keep and the happiness that I keep to know that right now, there's not a storm here. We're pretty calm weather. And I know their folks sitting out there waiting. I'm not going to apply, just in case the board wanted to know. I'm not going to put my hat in the ring. But that is, that is a thought about the interim position. One thing about that interim position is, if we get down to the next meeting we have to make some decisions about what we're looking for, it is a responsibility of this board to consider at that time and look at, that's a good time to look at our timeline. And I don't say, now, we know it's going to take two weeks for Ms. Baker. It may be this board wants to recess and meet next week, next Tuesday, next Wednesday again, to talk about the timeline and some more about the criteria for this. At that time, if we can kind of poll Mrs. Baker a little bit about what she's thinking, then out in the far reaches of what we've got, and I trust this board, that interim position can be discussed. What do you want? How, resumes? It doesn't take, from what we're looking at, and it's a lot of stuff has to hit the table before we have that decision, really, Dr. Buttram, but I don't think it's going to take us a month. If we know about September 1st, that we're still hung out there pretty far, I don't think it's going to take a month to get those folks, they already know this is going on as a possibility. The next time we meet, we should be soon. We need to set that perimeter that at this particular time, if we've not gotten everything we need, we need to start getting a few resumes for the interim position. I don't want to jump out there too far and have people thinking that this board is not capable of getting that information in and getting this job filled, because we can do it. I have all the faith in we're on this board and getting that job done. It just depends on us getting started and getting the process rolling. I think that's the biggest thing we've got, is just getting this process rolling. Now that we've got all of our motions in and voted, we're rolling right now, so.
I got, when you get through, I've got one.
You have questions?
Yes. I have concern about possible turnover in our existing staff at a very inappropriate time. And in industry, to keep people, we frequently pay some type of a retention payment. And I don't know, I haven't talked with anybody, Ms. Mathis or Ms. Baker or anybody, and what's involved in that, but I don't think we need to be losing anybody anytime soon. And it may take a little carrot out there to make sure that doesn't happen. And I'm not, I don't have anything in mind, but I would suggest the board investigate that.
I'd like to also comment that, if I may?
Ms. Ma'am?
Just speaking to the employees that we have now, we have a successful school system. And we're looking forward to hearing how we did last year. I'm really looking forward to it, because I'm anticipating really good news. We have people who've done a superb job. I don't anticipate that if we hire a really strong director of schools, that they would want to let people go who are doing a really good job. In my opinion, if we hired somebody who would, would, you know, just start letting people go because they've been here before, not based on merit at all, that we've chosen the wrong person. We have a strong system. We have people who are doing a really, really good. We have people who are doing a really, really good job. And I don't think that, and I think you all need to know that if you're doing a good job, we see this as a stable system. We don't see this as a time of huge turnover. And hopefully, we wouldn't be hiring somebody insecure enough to feel like they had to clean house. We want to find somebody who recognizes talent and keeps talent in the system. We do not want to lose our strongest assets. And that's our employees, our principals, our teachers, and our central office staff.
I agree with you totally, but that's why I'm recommending the retention payment, that these people can be assured that they will have a job for a certain period of time. If they stay till the end of that period of time, they get the payment, and that by then, they will have had a chance to determine whether they want to stay and work with the new director.
Right.
So, and I, this may come under the MEA negotiations, but if they were opposed to that, I think they would be subject to a lot of criticism trying to do something that was detrimental to the school system.
Are you speaking to central office people?
I was thinking about the senior staff members that might be concerned with the change of administration.
Let me assure you that I don't mind things that we talk about, but I don't want to get too far out on a limb in this process. It may be something that you may want to sit down with. I'm concerned also at what you've said, but it may be something we want to sit down with Ms. Mathis and discuss. I don't want to step out there on too many limbs because you brought up negotiations, retention. I thought we were on the selection process for director of schools, and from there, I don't want to get out there too far because it's not on the, and I know we've, but it's not on the agenda, and I'd like to stay with the agenda. And certainly, that is an issue that you just brought up that caught me off guard anyway. So...
I agree with that. It's just something that the board, there's a lot of things to be thinking about, and that's one of the coordinations that they are aware of.
And those are good things if you, like I said, recess to the next meeting, that'd be an opportune time if there are things you want to put on the agenda that has to do with this process and the criteria. Maybe it falls on the vision for the next director of schools. The vision of retention.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would we be allowed to recess this meeting and add something like that to the second part? Or would that have, would we just have to have a separate meeting and have that as part of the agenda?
I think if you announce now the items you'd want to add to the next meeting, that would be sufficient.
Okay.
Ms. Wade, would that be a employment item? I mean, I thought we were going to try to stay away from employment issues that really weren't our concern.
I'd like Mr. Hopper at the, on the agenda for the next meeting, if this is on the business for the next, for the agenda. Maybe there's some clarification he'd like to bring to that. I don't want to definitely get into an employment situation because that would be something Mr. Wilkinson would need to maybe address to the board if there was a problem. And there may be some things that Mr. Hopper would like to share at the next. We're going to set that date before we leave today. But there may be something and some items you would like to add beside setting the timeline and selection criteria, the retention, and I heard you dropped negotiations while you were passing one of you. That may be something that you may want to put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Another question, does, does, would retention bonuses to senior staff affect, would that have anything to do with negotiations?
Well, if you're focusing on the management team, they are not part of the bargaining unit.
Okay.
So negotiations wouldn't impact, if that's, if that's what you mean by senior staff, the management team, negotiations wouldn't impact them.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Campbell?
I know we don't want to belabor this, but two things come to my mind. Number one, those people in supervising positions at the central office, are they not tenured? If they are tenured, then a new director of schools cannot come in and just release, they could change their position.
Right.
But they've still got a position. My next thought is, when we change principals in a school, we don't give teachers in that school a bonus to retain them in that school. I don't see the difference between the teachers in the school with a new principal and the people at central office with the new director. We don't have a new director. It's going to be five or six months before we have a new director, I think, in my opinion. So I don't see why we need to, I just don't think that we need to get into a situation where we're offering people a bonus to stick around to see what the new director's going to do. I, this is my opinion. But I think we need, let's get back to where we, where we are, where we're going. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Ms. Ridley, are you getting down to things that at the next we'd like to? Okay, Ms. Doug?
If we're looking at agenda items for the next part of this meeting, I'd like to ask that Mr. Washington come prepared to share with us any of his thoughts on behalf of the city council concerning the direction of the school system, any guidance that you would have for us. I would very much like to hear your thoughts at that point.
Be glad to, but I just have to report one. I'm going to Las Vegas Saturday.
You're going to be there a month, aren't you?
I'll be, I'll be back next Thursday.
Next Thursday? All righty.
So anything else that you'd like to see on the agenda?
The timeline.
Oh, yes.
And are we, are we through giving you, do you have enough guidance for what we're looking for, do you think?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
Ms. Baker, certainly I'm appreciative for you taking all that responsibility to help us out. Thank you. Hope we've not overwhelmed and overworked you. Thank you. If everybody will get their little planners on their calendar, Mr. Washington has made it, we've asked him to be on the agenda for the next meeting. We need to be decided when our next, because we're going to recess this for the next meeting.
That would be the 23rd.
Are you going to be back on the, on the 22nd, Mr. Washington? Are you going to be back?
I'll be available the 23rd.
Oh, wonderful.
And I will not be.
Okay.
I'll be gone all next week.
That's two down. I said that's two down.
For the 23rd, it is.
Okay, now, what day are you, what day are you available? You don't mind me asking?
I'm available on Wednesday afternoons and Tuesday afternoons and Friday afternoons.
Are we looking at afternoon or we looking at evening meeting on the 23rd?
I could do evening also.
I'm going to ask the board about that when we get the date. If the day is conducive for you. What I can ask it now, which time of day is best for y'all? Is after 3:00 or after 4:00 better for the board members? Certainly, Mr. Washington, is it okay with, Mr. Campbell, is it okay with you?
Breakfast is okay too.
Well, I'm going to do it, Mr. Campbell. Is the 24th, Mr. Washington, would 24th be good for you if we had to move it to the 24th?
On the Friday?
Somebody say no?
I'm not available right now.
Okay, not available.
I'm down 24th, 24th, 23rd.
About to be late evening.
Is anybody available, is everybody available on 25th?
On Saturday?
Which is on a Saturday. Are you available?
An afternoon.
You're not. Mr. Hopper's not. What about the 26th? After church, afternoon, 4 o'clock?
I'm not.
I'm not going to deal with Mr. Hopper. Are there any openings for Sunday afternoon about 4? Is that bad for you, Mrs. Doug?
On the 26th, are you going to be back then?
Oh, that's good for you.
Are you just going to be still? He'll still be gone.
Would that be okay for me?
I've not had a chance, Mrs. Phillips had to leave.
That would be overtime for Sunday.
Oh, will it? Oh, well, thank you. That brings us back, that reels me back in. Well, I'm still down on the week of the 27th.
We're just running out of time, aren't we?
That's one week over. That'll give Ms. Baker a little more time to get her information back. If everybody will check their calendar for the 30th, is that a good day for everybody? The 30th at 4 o'clock?
No. What day of the week? No, I can't do that.
Thursday. What about Friday, the 31st?
I can. What about Wednesday, the 29th? Is that still off? Not available?
The 29th a bad day for you, Mr. Washington?
29th?
28th? She can't do it then. What about the?
Ms. Wade? If you're having a hard time finding a date, you don't have to do a recess. You can just do, if it's going to be that far out, you'll have time to do another advertisement.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I will solicit the help of Mrs. Ridley to get some, I'll give her some dates and get her to poll this board.
What about the 28th, which is when we usually would have met?
I do have a regular meeting.
On the Tuesday? Oh, okay.
Did Mr. Washington say he wasn't available?
Oh, I'm going to be gone then, too. No, I'm not. I'll be here, I'll be here.
We will?
27th and 29th is out.
Okay.
I'll say, I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
It is out.
No. What we want to do, I'm going to send some dates to Mrs. Ridley and ask all the board members to please check your planners and your calendars. It may run us into the first week of August, and that may be a little better time, since this was kind of a joke, getting everybody in.
Mrs. Wade, I'd like to recommend that we go ahead and maybe set several dates and just have them.
Okay.
And if we don't need them, then that's fine, but if we can have some tentative dates, of course, we have our regular August board meeting, but we might want to go ahead and set, if we meet the early part of August, maybe one other time before the August board meeting. Because as Dr. Andrews said earlier, we know that we're in for many more sessions than we've probably been used to in a while.
All righty. Then what we will do is we'll set some dates, we'll poll the board members. Let me make you aware that the quorum is six, or the quorum is five for us? What is it, five for us?
Four.
Four. Then when we set some dates, we're going to have to scatter some dates. It may be that just four of us are available. And you hate to do that, but I don't think anybody's schedule is really going to be good. So we're going to set some dates and we're going to go ahead and meet if it's only four or five. The others can get the minutes of that meeting and catch up. Are there any more questions or anything else that you'd like to add to the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, we're all going to be afternoon meeting.
Yes.
Can we have ice cream?
We'll talk about that. Mr. Hopper would like to have ice cream sundaes. He can bring it for the whole board and that will eliminate.
Oh, man, by the way, right?
Yeah. We don't get paid with myself to have ice cream.
A lot of people don't know that. Is there, are there any other questions or agenda items you'd like to add? And certainly, I'd like to thank the ones that came to the audience to hear our call meeting, our special meeting. Thank you so much for giving up your valuable time. Ms. Mathis, is there anything you'd like to?
I'm in.
I want everybody to know, Ms. Mathis, just in case, is still employed. So I don't want anybody thinking that she's fixing to get off and not have anything to do. She is still employed and working for this system. So thank you for the service you've given. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's been moved to the 2nd, we shall adjourn.
All right. David? Get your ice cream maker out and get this.